Good evening, good evening, good evening. The time is seven oh two and the day is May the first. And welcome to our May Parent and Community Advisory Council Meeting, also known as PCAC. I want to thank our amazing liaisons for joining us this evening for the Board of Education. We have Mr. Jonathan Briggs and Ms. Pamela Boozer-Struthers. I don't see our superintendent liaison, but of course, our amazing support from Ms. Cindy tonight in place of Ms. Barton, who is not here, but we're excited to see all of our members that could make it to the meeting. And so what I would do is I would like you, Secretary Ross, to do roll call, please.
Certainly. Dr. Paris Adon. Reverend Dr. Orlando Jermaine Bago.
President.
Ms. Rebecca Brown.
President.
Ms. Shawday Davis. Ms. Michelle Durden.
Present.
Mr. Will Epps.
Present.
Dr. Sheila Jackson.
Present.
Ms. Carletta Lundey.
Present.
Chair Dolores Milhouse.
Present.
T. Carter Ross is present. Vice Chair Teresa Smith.
I'll be present.
Ms. Kira Walker. Mrs. Robin Welsh. Ms. Latanza Wilson. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, thank you. And again, just thank you, everyone, for coming. And I do want to give the floor right now to the Board Liaison. If you want to introduce our new PCAC members. If you have anything to say, we do have Ms. Ms. Durden, is it Durden, right? Ms. Durden is on here, so I want to give the floor to our Board Liaison to say a few words.
Thank you so much, Chair Britt Milhouse. I'm going to be quick because I didn't come prepared with the statement and want to apologize, but we are looking forward to thoroughly inviting our new PCAC members officially to the Advisory Council. We're so grateful for your interest as well as service that you'll be giving for the next few years. I want to say that we, as the Board, and I'm sure Board Member Boozer-Struthers, we're also shared just quickly. We know how important it is that we have parent voices that represent each of our districts. We know that Board Members and the Superintendent and his team have their kind of distinct contributions to the work that we do to really advance education priorities as well as to address the needs of our communities and schools and staff. But I think that parents offer a very unique role in being able to kind of close that gap. Where we have blind spots, you all provide that perspective, that insight, and I think really also that leadership to support with a number of different initiatives. So I know as a Board Liaison, I'm very excited about the possibility and the potential for that. And as you are joining this first meeting, you'll see that there are tons of discussion, tons of passion around a number of different priorities. And so I just want to say thank you for kind of adding to that work collectively and for being here today. And I pass it to Board Member Boozer-Struthers if you have anything to share.
Thank you, colleague Briggs. Hi, I'm to our newest members, I'm Pamela Boozer-Struthers. I'm the District Three Board of Education member. I am also a parent of an eighth grader. I'm currently on the sidelines of Green Belt Youth Baseball, which is his, with his love. And as a Board of Education member, I also understand the commitments we all have and that you're making a commitment to this committee will require time away from your family. And I want to say thank you upfront for the commitment that you're making and that you probably also make in your school buildings. I came out of parent leadership in Mount Rainier Elementary, and now I'm a Hyattsville Middle parent and will be a Northwestern High School Wildcat parent for my final four years with my son. And I just want to say how valuable the revival of PCAC has been for these last couple of years and that you're entering at a time where you can make a lot of difference through input because of the the work of the group that helped revive this over the last couple of years. And Chair Dolores Milhouse and T. Carter Ross and the other leadership who have made this possible. So I look forward to working with you as ever, for the time I remain as a liaison. But then, of course, as I continue on as a Board Member. So again, welcome.
Thank you both so much. And so I would like to do just a quick round robin so our newest members can get to know who we are, since we don't have really any face-to-face and off-site meetings. And so Dr. Jackson, I would like to start with you and Ms. Welsh and you. They are designated from the Superintendent. There are fifteen members total in PCAC, and two of those members include designees from the Superintendent. So, Dr. Jackson.
Absolutely. Hello and welcome to our newest Board Member. I'm Sheila Jackson. I'm Director of the School Systems Department of Family and Community Partnerships. And everything family engagement we work within our system as well as community and business partnerships. So if you ever have any questions, please, we serve all 207 schools with a very small staff, but mighty. So, welcome.
Thank you. Ms. Welsh.
Good afternoon. I'm Robin Welsh, and I want to welcome out to both of you for becoming a member of PCAC. I think it's critically important that we have parents working in this capacity and really having a voice in many of the things that are going on in the school system. So we greatly appreciate the fact that you are willing to work with us. I am the Director of Government Relations, Compliance and Procedures. And so we spent a lot of time working with the Board of Education in the development of policies as well as following up with administrative procedures so that those policies can be implemented. And we also do track legislation.
Yes. Thank you, thank you. And so I want to make sure that you also are aware that fifteen members include community, right? And so we can't do this without our community partners. And so I would like to start with first Ms. Carletta Lundey, who represents Civic Engagement.
Hello, welcome to you both. Welcome. Your voice certainly does matter, and I am happy to be here to serve with you. I am one of the persons who will be, this is in my second year of serving as a civic and community representative. And so again, welcome, 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 and look forward to working with you for the rest of this term. And so God bless y'all.
Ms. Lundey, and we have our Business Community Representation, Mr. Will Epps.
Great evening, everyone. Welcome to the Prince George's County PCAC. Like Ms. Lundey, myself, I am also in my second year as well representing the business community. I do have two elementary school-aged children who we live in District Five, and so welcome. And we will do everything to support your ramp-up period.
Thank you, Mr. Epps. And we have our faith-based community representative, Reverend Dr. Orlando Bago. Where'd he go?
He just dropped off. I think he was having a connection issue earlier.
Okay. And so we will move into Ms. Rebecca Brown, who she is a member of the PGCEA Union, but she is representing Union Representation on the Committee. Ms. Brown.
Yes, I am. I'm actually a teacher at Martin Luther King Junior Middle School. I teach eighth grade. So I'm glad to be here, and I'm glad you're here to be part of this wonderful group because we're doing things that are vital to my job and to our children.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. And so I'm going to go into the Officers. I am the Chair.
Just forgive me. Cindy, it looks like Ms. Shawday Davis is in the, and is an attendee. Could she be promoted to as a panelist, please? I apologize for the interruption.
That's okay. That's thank you. And I want to wait to. She comes along. Ms. Davis, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. I'm honored to be here tonight.
Yeah. So were you able to kind of catch some of the conversation?
Yes, I've been on for all of the introductions, and it is, it's definitely been a pleasure. I know I was on as a attendee, so I couldn't speak, but it was definitely amazing seeing everyone and learning names and seeing faces.
Okay, so welcome, welcome to the panel. Welcome to the major league, right? And so I want to move into myself. I am the Chair. I am also the Representative for District Seven, working with Dr. Kenneth Harris. I have two students who actually attend school in District Six in specialty programs, Kettering Middle School Spanish Immersion Program, as well as Philistine Williams Spanish Immersion Program, which is actually, I think, Mr. Briggs, we're in your district right now at a swing space. And so I am also in my second year of my first term here with PCAC. I have sixty days left. And so next we'll go to our Vice Chair, Ms. Teresa Smith.
Good afternoon, everyone. So like, I'm Board Member Pam. I am out here in Greenbelt Baseball this evening. My son had a game. But I am the Vice Chair. I have been on PCAC for a couple of months now. I am a parent of two current PGCPs students. One attends in a school in District Eight, and the other is in District Six. And I also have a graduate of PGCPs from Largo High School. I absolutely love being on PCAC. I always tell people I am a mother first. That's who I am in the simplest form. So I'm grateful for the things that come out of this council, and I'm looking forward to working with you all. So welcome aboard.
Thank you. And our Recording Secretary, oh, wait a minute, Ms. Smith, did you say District Six? You said District Six, right?
I'm sorry, I may not have. I am the Representative for District Six. Thank you.
So our Recording Secretary, Ms. T. Carter Ross.
Hello, I'm T. Carter Ross. I'm the Representative for District Three, working with Board Member Pamela Boozer-Struthers and serving as Recording Secretary for PCAC. I am in my fifteenth year as a PGCPs parent, which is also my final year as a PGCPs parent with my youngest graduating from the Academy of Health Sciences in a few short weeks. My older daughter graduated from Northwestern back in 2020. And yeah, it's been an honor to serve on this committee and look forward to having hearing and seeing all the great things that this committee helps PGCPs move forward in the years to come.
Excellent. And so Ms. Walker, welcome. We are doing introductions to our new members that are here. So we want to drumroll it and pass it on to you.
I am Kira Marshall Walker. This is my second year as a PCAC member. I represent District Eight, and I'm representing the Hill today since my, it's National College Signing Day. My child is going to the Hill. That's why I'm having today. So I'm excited about that. I have children that range from graduating senior to kindergarteners. So I'm not done yet. But I currently work in the capacity of special air compliance for the district government with the State of, the Office of State Superintendent of Education and for DC Government. So I do work in an educational capacity. I've worked in educational capacity in a variety of different ways, in classroom, as a coach, as a teacher, as a technical person. So I have enjoyed my time working with PCAC. This year has been much more active. We've been, I feel like we've been able to have a greater impact by being invited into spaces where our voice is needed for the community and just actually getting out more and helping District Eight schools as far as forming PTSAs, PTOs, helping them to address, you know, community issues or, you know, doing what the PCAC is here to do, to support the community as parent representatives. So, you know, the election is coming up, so I do encourage you all to pay attention to those who are on the ballot for the school board and to do your research on how those that are on the ballot have made contributions to the community and the decisions they have made and really be cognizant of how these decisions impact our children. And right now, but also for the future, because we are here to help improve our county in the future. So I'm sorry for being long-winded. I'm excited to be amongst people. I have back surgery, so.
No, we are welcoming you back. And so this is, you know, we didn't have a retreat this year. So, you know, I wanted to give some time, and I now want to move into Ms. Durden, who's District One, and then we're going to move down to Ms. Davis, District Nine, and give them the floor to give a brief introduction of who they are. You know, now they're part of, you know, the group. So let's go. Let's get it. Let's work it.
Well, I'll talk for just a second until my kids come back in. I live in District One, but my son and my daughter next year will go to Robert Goddard Montessori School. My son is going to be a rising first grader, and my daughter will start the pre-K three program. I'm excited to be here. Really, the work, everything that you guys have been saying about our voices being heard and bettering everything for the future, that's why I'm here. Absolutely. I work for the federal government, and I have a business as well. So, you know, lots of things all coming together to help form my opinions and hopefully be a great advisor.
Oh, you will be. You already are. That's how we just show up with greatness. Right? Ms. Davis, District Nine.
Welcome, welcome, welcome. This District One Representative, I'm so glad we are both joining today. And thank you, everybody, again, for allowing me to be on tonight. My name is Shawday Davis, representing District Nine. I am a fourth-grade mom at Akikika Academy, rising fifth grader, so my baby is growing up on me, but happy tears. I also have a niece here in District Nine as well at Walden Woods Elementary School, and I serve as the president of both PTAs. So I am pretty busy.
Anybody wish to hug her?
Yeah, please. I need all the hugs and the love. I'm PCA President at Walden Woods and PTSA President for Akikika Academy. I love children. I love advocating for children. I work at a nonprofit organization, Old Town Alexandria, where I'm on the education team. So even with adult education, I am still an advocate for lifelong learning, and I want to rally along with all of our districts here in Prince George's County to make our county continually great and to be a blessing to every type of student in our county. And I'm happy to serve.
Well, we are excited. Have both of you join us. Our newest members are going to do some great things, right? Because you're not hoping to be great advisors. You're already coming as great advisors, right? And so we have a skill set that qualifies us to be here. And that skill set is just having an open mindset and being willing to listen, to learn, and to collaborate. And if you can do that, you can make some great things happen here at PGCPs, right? So we're excited, and I appreciate you all allowing me to take the time to use, to just really allow us to get to know each other, welcome our new members aboard. I now need to move into the adoption of the May one, 2024 meeting agenda. And so I'd like to have a motion from the floor.
So moved.
Back in. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Then you want to oppose this? Please speak now with a nay. So at this time, I hear none, and so we will move forward with the adoption of the agenda for May one, 2024 as it stands. We will now move into item 1.4, Approval of the Meeting Minutes for April third, from our April, yeah, September third, 2024 meeting. Yes. That require a motion from the floor.
So moved.
Thank you. And do we have anyone who, well, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing or want to recommend any changes, please say so now. Hearing none, we will move forward in approving the meeting minutes for April third, 2024. Moving into item 1.5, Report of the PCAC Chair. It is going to be short and sweet. We have new members. Kudos, kudos, kudos. We have really been moving along. And at one point, I was just like, oh, we are never going to have a quorum. But I'm excited to welcome new members. I am also excited that yesterday, Mr. Carter and I presented at Dr. Jackson, and what's the title? What did we?
It's called Family Institute, and you all presented about administrative procedures that parents need to know about. And I will just say that my team has had nothing but rave remarks today. So thank you all for doing that, engaging families in building their knowledge and capacity. You all really rocked, and I've seen the recording, and it was very good. Thank you all.
Let's go. I'm sorry, my signal went out or something. I don't know. I didn't hear anything you said.
I was just, they can repeat it, but it was just, my team did nothing but rave about the presentation last night. They were actually in the room with me where I'm facilitating the transportation. And I was like, what, all these smiles and everything? You all were rocking the house last night. Thank you for the information of, for enlightening parents and, you know, building capacity, which is what Family Institute is all about. So thank you all for helping out and bringing your knowledge to the community.
You are welcome. And I mean, I'm actually going to just pretty much end on that for the report of the Chair and say to me, that's what PCAC is about, right? Us having the opportunity to share things from our perspective, right? From the parent perspective, from the community perspective, to really help build capacity. And Carter, please jump in at any point. I think we went into the conversation just wanting to make sure people understood the difference between the board policies and then the administrative procedures, right? And how to do research and find them, right? But not to use them as a tool to say, I got you, right? But we appreciated Ms. Smith, Vice Chair Smith, who was also present in just the dialogue and being able to converse with other parents, other staff, other community members who not only had questions, but also allowed us to kind of walk away with a little bit more knowledge, right? And so to me, it really is how we come together and build community. And what Ms. Walker stated is that when we are invited into spaces as partners, then that really allows us to really work to collaborate and share our knowledge and expertise. Ms. Smith?
I wanted to ask Dr. Jackson a quick question. But Chair, I wanted to mention that, yes, I echo everything that was just said about the presentation. It was really good, and it was so good that parents are asking me, was it recorded? And can they get a copy? So Dr. Jackson, do you guys typically share that recording with the community?
We do. So now, and I will remember this. I'll put it in my own notes so I can remember to post it so that you all can have a copy of it.
After.
I'll ask, maybe it can go, because it is a PCAC presentation, it can go right in Board Docs with PCAC if you'd like.
Carter and I have to sign off on it. It's proprietary. I'm just joking.
So, yeah. I was going to say, you do have to look at it, okay?
No, no, it's not. It doesn't have to go on PC. You can, you know, what you usually do. You all usually send out the recordings, right? And so it was information to be shared. We just gathered what we have been doing over the years in our own areas of advocacy. And so it really is important. I do want to state that we, the officers, met with the Superintendent House and Chief Boyd. I think the the fifth, I think that Friday. And I know our PCAC meeting had been rescheduled. I think it's next week for the Committee as a whole. And just some of the feedback that we gave them as it relates to transportation and communication. I am happy to see that some of the things that we even suggested and mentioned during that call was actually displayed at the Town Hall sessions that they had and just really how they communicated the information from a perspective of, you know, making sure you had the concerns of the parent, the concerns that were raised in the community. Address those while you're standing there, right? And I think the Board, you know, did a good job as well, asking various questions and making sure that they also elevated the voices of the community on what we needed to see so we can be comfortable in how we move forward with the deployment of this, I guess, phase one of the transportation rollout, right? And so, you know, that is my report. Did I miss anything, Carter, Ms. Smith? No? And so unless anyone has any questions about anything that I shared, that concludes my report. We will move on to item 1.6, Report of the Superintendent Designees. And so Dr. Jackson and Ms. Welsh, if you can give a brief highlight of items in your respective area that we need to pay attention to.
I will defer to Ms. Welsh.
Okay, thank you. So I did want to share that at the last meeting, the legislative session had just ended. And so we are now, and so right now, the Governor's in the process of signing the bills. There are, he had two signing sessions already, and he will be signing them more bills on May ninth and then May sixteenth should wrap it up. And so many of the bills that are education-related bills have been signed, have been signed, not all of them. I mean, he still has many more, but he is moving forward. And we suspect that any bill that made it to the Governor will be signed, or at least he will not veto any of those bills. And so our office right now is in the process of putting together a, basically, an internal control document that would, that lists out the different bills that passed and lays out specifically what are the requirements for the school system to implement those, those soon-to-be laws. And we break it out by divisions, so that way it makes it pretty clear for each of the divisions so they know what it is that they're required to do in order to be in compliance with the law. So that sort of ends it for the legislative session right this moment. But we do have several policies and bylaws that are moving. They, this past Thursday at the Board meeting, the Board voted, it made the recommendation to put these policies and bylaws out to, for public comment. So they'll be out for public comment for two weeks. They are the bylaw, and there's no numbers to these two bylaws because they're new. One is bylaw executive session, so it's just a bylaw about this Board operating executive session. And the second one is a bylaw. And the second one is a bylaw under the regular board meeting. And then it's, it's actually describes what happens in a regular board meeting. Additionally, we have a policy and that is, this one doesn't have a number also, only because we actually combined two policies to put this together. And it's student, student information and, and, um, educational records. Um, and so that one is again up for public comment. And then the last one, policy zero, one, zero, one on educational equity is also up for public comment. So again, I encourage, um, uh, all members of P CAC as well as parents in your districts to take advantage of this opportunity to provide public comment. The committee does seriously take it, take into consideration the comments they do receive. And many times will make revisions to policies based on the comments that have come from, um, the community and from the parents. So please take advantage of the opportunity to do that. In addition to that, the committee in this coming Tuesday, we have a committee meeting and the committee will be addressing, um, for, uh, discussion only right now is policy five, one, two, one. And this one's, uh, grading and reporting for elementary and secondary students. So I, I know this is probably an important, um, policy for many parents and students just because it goes, it goes to grading and reporting. So even starting now, please feel free to attend policy meetings and provide public comment on the policies. That, and so because again, the committee will take that into consideration. The other policy that's up for, um, a discussion on Tuesday is policy three, three, two, three, and that one's on purchasing. And we are, we, we actually worked on that policy last year and had made revisions. But the, the, at the last legislative session, twenty twenty three, there had been changes to the limits of which, uh, you have to, uh, bid. You put, you put out bids, you know, and have competitive bidding. And so we are bringing the policy up, back up to make revisions based on the laws from last year's legislative session. And then we are also, um, going to be moving forward to action. But again, oftentimes the committee discussed these things again, but the policy is policy four, one, one, three. And it's community involvement in the principal selection process. And again, that is that there is a section in that policy. It does talk about the importance of having the parents who, for, of those students who attend a particular school to be a part of the, uh, application review process when they are selecting a principal for a particular school. And then the last one is policy six, one, six, one, which is talks, is core curriculum resources. And that policy also has a section that talks about, uh, community and parental involvement in terms of helping to evaluate, um, the different textbooks and instructional, uh, materials that the school system purchase. So there are several of these are, I, I would think would be very highly interested, interest, parents would be very interested in just because of the, either their involvement in the process or the impact it has for their students. And one other thing I like to say, uh, to Chair Milhouse, I absolutely want to know which eight Ps you said were the ones that parents should really know about, but that you shared at, at, um, Dr. Jackson's, uh, session. Only because that will be very helpful for us as we go and review and revise administrative procedures. So I'm interested in just getting that information. I think that's important information.
So let me just say, we, 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 the presentation wasn't that granular. We didn't just say, hey, these are the ones. We did an overall.
Oh, oh, okay.
Really focusing on making sure that people understood the difference between the board policy and the administrative procedures, right? Like who was responsible for creation and development of board policy? And what authority the board had or none over the adoption of administrative procedures, right? So we needed people to understand that they were in two different sides of the school house or the school district, right? And we, we highlighted just a couple of different, um, procedures to also align them with the, say, hey, when there's a policy, there's sometime an administrative procedure that aligns with it.
Absolutely.
And so we, we did it from that perspective because we didn't want to have a whole little biased eye on it, you know? They want to do that.
No, that's, that's outstanding. I just thought that maybe there are some very specific APs that are important to parents because that's helpful for us as we do revisit, revisions and reviews on administrative procedures.
Well, I, you know, they did ask us which ones that we think that, you know, were most helpful for us, right? And so for me, I mentioned, of course, the visitation, right?
Right, uh-huh. Absolutely.
Right? I, I mentioned, um, the one for P T Os and P T As. Um, because, you know, as I served as a, um, uh, officer on the P T Os and P T As, so I needed to know. But the, the student handbook, right?
That's a really important one.
Yeah, that, that's almost like a Bible, right? He, that, you know?
It absolutely is.
Yeah. And then there, um, there was one more that I, the, the grading policy.
Oh, okay. There we have it.
Yeah. I mean, those were, those were the hot ones for me.
Yeah. And I would say we also, uh, tried to just talk about the process and, uh, really highlighted the importance of the policy and governance committee and providing feedback early and often there. So, um, hopefully we'll get some more crowded agendas as people try to bring in more comments. And we also gave people ways to sort of look and search for policies. So it was not so much that policy A, B, and C, or procedure A, B, and C are critical. But instead, when you have an issue, start by looking and finding what that, uh, procedure is and the related policy. And then that'll help educate you on how to, um, advocate better.
Yep.
That's excellent. That's very good.
We'll share the presentation with you.
Yeah, I'd love to see it.
Yeah.
Ms. Smith. Anyway, that's all I have for this evening.
Can you just, what, before Ms. Smith, what was fifty one, twenty one? That's the grading policy.
Yes, grading and reporting.
Grading and reporting. And so this one is going to be discussed, what's the date?
Next Tuesday, the, the, um, what is the date? Seventh, I think.
May seventh? Okay. And so they would need to send in notice to sign up for public comment. By when? Cindy, do you know? Ms. Cindy, you know, what's the date? If it's Tuesday, they would have to sign up. When's the sign up open up?
Deadline is May tenth.
No, it's for, you're, she, they're looking at the May seventh meeting.
May seventh meeting.
For the public comments?
For the board.
Policies we just put out. It's May tenth.
No, they're saying if they want to come to the meeting and get public comment, when do they have to get to you to give you the public comment, let them know?
When is that open?
Right. So it opens on Friday at five. And we allowed fifteen, um, speakers. So if we get the fifteen speakers before the meeting, it closes. If not, it closes twelve o'clock the day of the meeting.
So the third.
No, the seventh.
The seventh. The ninth, sorry.
It'll open, it'll open. It opens May third. Five P M?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. That, that's what I, I wanted to get confirmation. Um, and that would be great if they could do that, like, put out a notice and say, hey, the meeting is open up for comments. You know, um, that would be awesome. Ms. Smith? I mean, Vice Chair.
Robin, I had a quick. Thank you. Robin, I had a quick question. If there is a policy that's currently published, but it's not being adhered to, what's the process on getting the background information as to why?
Wow. Okay. Depending on the, the, and it's really, so the policy, the administrative procedure should really lay out in much more detail how the policy should be, like, to implement that policy, what does the school system need to do? So just like actually, uh, Chair Milhouse said, it's critically important, first of all, to know the administrative procedure and what, and what it says and what entails. And depending on the subject matter and who, who is involved, like, let's say it's at the school level and the school isn't following something in the administrative procedure. I always recommend first talk to the principal. If you don't get, uh, you don't get an answer or know what's happening, then go to that, um, principal's, uh, instructional director and then move up the ladder. We many times our office will get complaints of different policies that are administrative procedures that haven't been followed. And I always first begin with the principal and then the instructional director when it's school level. Now, if it's system, if it's like system or administrative, you know, like, um, some central office kind of thing where they were supposed to do something, I would then go to the chief of that division. And if you, um, if you look at the, uh, very back of the administrative procedure and the very back page, it always has who's responsible for that administrative procedure. So you'll know which division is responsible for, um, reviewing, rewriting the administrative procedure and ultimately making sure that it's implemented correctly. Because there's also a monitoring and compliance section for each administrative procedure.
Robin, can?
Thank you. This is very helpful.
Can I jump in here really quick? Cause I know that, I think, um, and Teresa, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I know that, um, she is really interested in that advisory, um, special education advisory council or board that we had talked about, we had the whole presentation on like earlier this year, late last year. And I know that there's like a distinction between what that does and then there's like the law, the state law that exists around the process. And so, um, I'm going to have a call with her on Friday, but just wanted to align on that with you, Robin, about how to support here because some of the pieces, um, Teresa, we might want to just get clear on about who's responsible for what. Um, but Robin, if you want to give us like a quick rundown on the discussion that we had about that specific advisory council, that might help to what I think Teresa might have been asking.
Well, we have, so, uh, the, in, in the committee meeting, we had a conversation about, uh, the actual, the current policy, which is not being implemented at this point in time. And then there is also the, uh, C S A C, which is Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee. And that is driven by law and says that every school system must have a C S A C. And they also look at lots of accountability issues, um, and budget issues and program issues, just a wide variety of different things. The difference is, is that, that, that particular group is supposed, and it's made up of a lot of parents of students who have disabilities. But that group is supposed to report to the Associate Superintendent of Special Education with the idea that the information that they share and provide helps to improve the services, uh, that are offered in the school system. And I, and, and the conversation in the committee meeting was about the fact that, that there's no actual committee that's reporting to the Board of Education. So that if there are, you know, issues around compliance or things not happening, whatever it might be, that the, it could, that through that committee, come to the committee to talk about and talk about, well, you know, what does that mean? And, you know, what needs to happen and how do you implement correctly, those types of issues? So the policy, my, uh, my bet, and this is, um, board membership, uh, board member Briggs, you need to jump in. But I think the idea was that they were going to start reinstitute the, that advisory committee. But I'm thinking based on the breadth of what they would like to, to address in the, in the advisory, that that policy, I actually, I think Cindy and I already stuck it on the list for next year, is a, a policy that we need to, if the committee can start, but the advisory committee can start. But we want to look at revising that policy so that it really addresses all the concerns of the parents, you know? Not just that particular policy really addresses only being in ADA compliance. And there's much more to offer services for students with, uh, disabilities that way beyond ADA compliance that parents are concerned about. And so therefore it, it needs to have a broader scope that would needs to be incorporated into the policy.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you. And, and, and that's policy seventeen hundred?
Yes.
Yeah. Yep. And so, um, thank you, Robin.
You're welcome.
Any, any other questions? And who would have thought that policy and procedures would be so exciting? I don't know. This is what I do every day though. This is the job that pays me. So.
I, I think it's very exciting.
It is. It's exciting to me, but you know.
Yeah. I guess there's so many certain people that really get a kick out of it, but I do enjoy it. I think it's important work.
So that's why I'm always digging into them. So Dr. Jackson, not that engagement isn't fun.
You know, you can't do effective engagement without having those administrative procedures in place because they guide and keep us on the tra, on the, on the tracks, keeps the train on the track. So, no, I'm, I get excited about it too, Robin. Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. And, uh, what Robin shared, uh, was one of the questions that I was asked at the last meeting. And she explained it so well about if you're ready, if you have concerns to raise about systemic situation. So yes, the, she says, start with the Associate Superintendent or the chief of the area of concern. Um, and, and many of you all have done that with transportation, for instance, this spring. But after that, if your concern is in addressed, you go to the superintendent and then you go to your wonderful Board of Education member to help you get some kind of rectification for the concern that you have. If you have questions or concerns about a school, uh, you always start with your child's classroom teacher. To ask your questions, raise your concern, you can move on up to guidance, the principal, the instructional director. And we actually have this document on the, uh, school system website under the parent web, webpage on how do you address concerns? And you could always call me to, to help walk you through this because, um, a lot of times people will say, oh, well, it takes weeks and weeks. And I, as a parent whose children are all grown now, it doesn't take that long. You raise a concern and you, you know, stay present in, in the issue to get some resolution so that your children can be successful. So we do have those protocols available. I just share with everyone. And so my report, I'm going to go quickly because y'all know I, I'm wordy. I, but I do want to let you all know for your participation in the partnership breakfast that we held at Newton White Mansion, people are still talking about the P CAC presence. Thank you all for being there and engaging with our business partnerships that were there and our community partners that were there. They were just blown away about our parent community advisory council and the fact that we have one and that they are so, um, so engaged and had so many questions. So thank you all for being there. You asked me a question last time about having students present and family institute sessions. So we have always made, given that option to the adult presenters that we have. Uh, because we can't ask students directly ourselves, but our presenters can't. Cause many of them work directly with students in schools. And all they have to do is follow procedures and make sure that they have a parental permission for the child to participate in a public forum. They sign a media release form. So it is definitely something that we support. We just want to make sure again that our students are supported and protected. I wanted to share with you all, uh, we just finished, um, and we're coming up on our last family institute session. But of course, uh, last night was a highlight for me for April. We had P CAC before that. We had violence prevention by Scott Showalter in our school system. We had an outstanding presentation on April ninth about what every parent should know about helping their children with mathematics. And it's not about teaching your child mathematics. It's just knowing what is available for supports for you as a parent to be able to support your child. Then, of course, you all know, we just finished last night, nine, uh, of those, uh, we call them Board of Education District Transportation Plan Meetings for Community Information Sessions. And we had seven evenings and two Saturday morning sessions. I will let you know, I'm exhausted. That was, I, I planned them. I helped coordinate, manage and moderate them. And I'm just so happy that we did it as quickly as we could because we don't want parents to be, you know, in a fog about what's getting ready to happen. So they had to create their plan. And the audit said you need to implement it right away. You can't wait because this trauma that we've had with transportation was existent when my children were in school as well. So, you know, I think the presentations were offered, but they also are, um, fluid. They're going to be taking feedback constantly. They're going to be connect, collecting data and making sure that parents are kept up to speed about what's working and what's, what, what we might be struggling with. So I want to say thank you to all of you who I saw at those transportation, um, sessions and your questions, uh, were just so outstanding. You actually asked critical questions to help the school system think about, you know, um, yeah, these are things that are issues for us as families and we want to address it early. So what's coming is this Saturday. Can y'all believe I rolled out of transportation last night? And Saturday, I'll be coordinating the school systems inaugural pride summit for students, families and allies. And that's going to be Saturday, May fourth. And that's going to be Saturday, May fourth, uh, via Zoom from ten AM to twelve PM. And I will be sharing, um, but I'm, I'm developing what we call a, um, run of the show that will have all of the sessions so that you all can have access to that. And you'll see what's going to be presented and what's, who's going to be presenting. Um, for students, almost all of their presenters, because we want them in a secure Zoom room, will be people who are authenticated by Prince George's County Public Schools. But on the other side of the house, we have a adult room, which are parents, families, uh, staff, uh, community partners, who will have presentations from some nationally known presenters just to help parents, you know, be able to support their children uh, that are LGBTQIA plus. And so looking forward to that. This is the first time as a school district that we have offered something like this. And it came about because students approached our superintendent. Uh, when he first came in, I think in September about, you know, nothing never happens, um, that helps us see, you know, our, our place in Prince George's County. And that's all it's about. It's about, you know, making sure that students, uh, feel supported and they know what supports that, that exists for them. So that's this Saturday. Um, and then May seventh, we had our final family institute session is about, uh, we call it making smooth moves. Talking about transitions. So if your children are transitioning kindergarten to first grade, uh, elementary to middle, middle to high, high school to college, what are some strategies that we need as parents to help us keep our sanity, but also be able to support our children? And so, um, we're looking forward to having that. Then we'll be planning for summer. We're going, you know, we are 12 months, so we will be working. This summer, we start brown, what we call brown bag sessions for principals. They also are 12 month. Uh, and we want to work with principals and their key family facing staff to help them develop strategies over the summer that they can hit the ground with, running with in the fall. Uh, so it'll be knowledge, it'll be strategies and helping them be able to plan effectively for next year. Um, I'll be teaching a class for MSD for staff as well for building staff capacity. Uh, staff who participate is a forty-five hour course. They get three credits from MSD for continuing professional development. And I've been doing this every year since, um, I think I, I think I started back in ninety-something, but it was with different topics. But since I've been family engagement, they've all been about how do you develop an action plan in your school? How do you make sure you're effectively engaging families and building partnerships? So that's what that work is about. I want everyone to know that our Board of Education member Harris, uh, is, we're helping him. He's going to have a father, a male engagement event, um, in August. It'll either be August twenty-fourth or August thirty-first. We'll help, helping him plan that. We want to have a large gathering so that father figures understand their role. And so, you know, most in education, we go to education meetings. We got a lot of moms there. We want our fathers to be engaged as well. Um, our superintendent is kicking off his fresh cuts, uh, where he's going to be, uh, with his barber hat on, uh, in different barber shops in the county, uh, and that's part of his back to school, welcome back to school. Uh, and also it's about, uh, you know, helping young folks understand the power of CTE programs as well. So I think, I think I have a lot and I, I want to give you all a chance to ask questions, but I do want you to know. Parent leadership support, uh, that's April Shannon, who's on my staff. She just held a parent leadership mixer on April twenty-second. It was so much fun. We had a bar. You know, mocktails, uh, we had refreshments, but we had just about every office you can think of in the school system there with resources to help equip parent leaders with information they could take back to their school, to their communities and share with other parents. Um, and we will do that again. It was such a big hit. We will probably do it in the fall as well. So the parents know all of the contacts that they can reach out to for the, for the whole year to support their students. Um, we have a, a parent cafe coming up, uh, this week actually on Friday. And it will be at Glen Ridge Elementary School. Uh, Wensum is in charge of parent cafes. Those are small intimate gatherings of parents where they actually talk about protective factors for their children. Um, and they have been very successful. Uh, schools have asked for that and we try to facilitate making those happen at least twice a month. Uh, she's also on the planning committee for next year's alumni gala. So if anyone wants to suggest any honorees of people who are alumni of Prince George's County Public Schools, please reach out to winsome.falby, F A L B Y at pgcps.org and let her know. And that, that committee investigates, uh, to find out, you know, who we can recognize and who we can bring forward to the public. Many of them, like a Kevin Durant, you know, will donate millions of dollars to the school system. Um, we get, we get sing and we, who sings to us? Kenny Lattimore comes and sings to us and this. So we have a, it's really a beautiful thing to do. Uh, last year we recognized Matthew Henson's family and, um, and political figures, but they're all Prince George's alumni. Uh, Mr. Ortiz is still running what we call Dadversities. He has one, uh, happening now. Uh, Oxon Hill Elementary School, they had the first six weeks that dealt with, um, it was in Spanish only. And not only for that school, but all schools near Oxon Hill Elementary participated. Now it's the, the English version, uh, of that is going on in that same community. But, uh, my plan, guys, is to take it bigger. We want to go. If you all want us to come to your community to help with these things, we will as well. So, and then Ronald Wilson and, uh, Janice Cook are planning the back to school drive and dash. We're already collecting backpacks to give away for students, um, and working to just make sure that, you know, we can develop as many supports for our students as possible. So, uh, one more thing is, uh, I think you've heard this, um, but if you all want your own session about this, uh, we are switching from the, uh, student information system called SchoolMax to what's called Synergy. And if that's something that PCAC would love to have your own private session on, we can make sure that that happens.
And I, I think of us were on the technology, um, um, committee.
Yes.
Were present and, and supported that, um, you know, that transition. So that would, that would be great, right? To do some testing on things before they launch, right?
Absolutely. And June would be a good time to do that, uh, because it's supposed to launch in July. It'll be wonderful for PCAC to be one of the focus groups that they actually did then. And they talked about it in transportation sessions, how PCAC was a, a powerful voice to help them with the planning for their action plan. So yes, yeah. And that's all.
Wow. That's great.
Okay.
Dr. Jackson, yeah, I don't, I don't know where you all find the time. Are you getting paid overtime?
I'm sorry. I should not have laughed like that. Um.
We be advocating.
Robin, Robin, do we, we're not, no, we don't get overtime. We just.
Well, we don't, we don't either. So.
That's right. You don't. That's true. As parents, you don't get overtime. You don't get paid for the incredible sacrifices that you make.
No.
Dr. Jackson, I was just going to say, we just work at the pleasure of the superintendent.
That is true. That is true.
And we work at the pleasure of our children. So.
Exactly. Oh, I love it. Yes.
So, um, if there are no questions, any questions? No. And so I appreciate the, um, the report of the superintendent designees. And, um, I think this is always very helpful in our meeting to, um, allow you all the time to share because it, it, I don't know. I feel like I'm always walking away with so much, but I do feel like I don't have enough time in my schedule to attend half the events that you all do on Dr. Jackson.
It's understood. It's understood. You are parents. We get that. So our job is to make sure it's available. You know, and when you can come, please do. And we're doing our best. I love being in communications now because I'm getting a better website. So we'll be able to post things so that parents can find them.
Okay. Well, we, we appreciate that. And, um, if there are no questions, we'll move into, um, item two, discussion and action items. Um, do we have any district community updates that anyone is having a burning desire? And I do want to just say for the event that's being, um, spearheaded by my district member, um, Dr. Harris. It, I, I've asked him not to call it a, a father event, right? Um, but to more so do a men of Prince George's County Public Schools, right?
You know, I, I, you're absolutely correct, Ms. Millhouse. And we've talked about that too.
Yeah.
It needs to be, because it's about male role models. It's about, you know, that whole energy. Um, bringing that community in to, to be with our children, to model for our children. So you're absolutely correct.
The father is going to definitely be highlighted in the role and, you know, but to really, you know, bring together the community of men, um, so they understand how much we need them, right? To go from good to great, right? We cannot do it without them, right? Ms. Smith, uh, well, let me just add for District Seven, um, that event, which, um, is very exciting. But at the meeting, um, during the presentation, there was, um, Ms. Carter. She had requested, she is pulling together, she's a parent leader in District Five. She is pulling together other PTOs, um, PTAs, parent leader groups and has requested if, um, PCAC can come out to one of those groups to me, right? And of course I said, yes. I mean, I didn't put any name on it, but I am hoping that, um, the date, when she sends it, that we can make sure that we look at our calendars to identify how we can go to support, to encourage parent leaders. Because I know we are doing that in District Seven. We have the District Seven Parent Leader Advisory, um, group now. We have a community advisory council and we have the parent advisory council. And when we can bring individuals together and build capacity and create that community. Um, Ms. Lundey, I do know you have a lot going on, but I have been telling people, um, like we, we have a heavy hitter to make sure that parents know how to raise their voice in the community. So, um, you will definitely be on the agenda. So, um, but I will send it out to the committee as a whole. Once it comes into the email account. Um, but as I know more and more about your areas of specialty and skill sets that you bring into it. If it's not set in your district, I still just share it out to the group as a whole. Okay. So I'm gonna go to Ms. Smith first and then I'm gonna go to you, Ms. Lundey.
Thank you, Chair Millhouse. Um, I do have five items that I wanted to report out on. Since we, um, are talking about outreach, I want to try to stay there a little bit. Um, the parent mixer, I attended and it was, it was fabulous. I really liked it. Thank you. Um, yes, yes, yes. And as a mom, I had got an emergency call that one of my children was missing. So things turned, turned for me, but it all worked itself out. One thing that I want, I would like to, I guess, bring to the attention here is that it might be a good outreach opportunity for PCAC to participate in as well. Cause I saw units from, you know, all different parts of the organization. And we know that PCAC is a branch as well. Um, so I wanted to put that out there. But then from a, from a larger perspective, it made me wonder, how can PCAC have outreach materials? I know that, you know, this, this, this unit doesn't have a budget, but you know, is, is there an opportunity for us to have outreach materials that can be shared, um, with participants? So that's one question. Um, I also attended the District Nine Community Summit. And a lot of critical information was shared there regarding parent engagement and involvement specifically from P, from PCAC. Um, but there was two groups who want to connect with us. That is the Boolean Advisory Council as well as the Liaison for the Military Families. They have a specific group of stakeholders, um, and, and you know, they learn more about PCAC. So they want to know how can they connect with us? So I think all of this falls under outreach. So I wanted to bring that to you all's attention. Um, the next item, as it relates to District Six specifically, um, about sixty-plus kids are being added to the John H. Bain student population. That is due to the closing of Concord Elementary School. So the Bear family, I am part of the Bear family, um, is looking forward to welcoming these students into their schoolhouse. The next item, um, I also attended the transportation session for two different districts. Um, but specifically for District Six, it was fruitful dialogue. So again, thank you all for being receptive to the concerns about, um, parents having their voice heard. I do think that the feedback that was shared are items that, that i- it appears that they may take into consideration.
I think so. I really do. Uh, Dr. Coleman was taking notes profusely and I, knowing him, that's all going back to the drawing board. So thank you.
Excuse me, Ms. Smith, can you, can you take over for a minute, please?
Sure, sure, sure. No problem. Um, Robin, this might be a question for you. Uh, but it's aligned to, it's dealing with transportation. Um, at times it, it, it appears that staff deviate from established processes. Um, and I'm bringing this to PCAC because I think we should be interested in knowing how operating procedures are evaluated and monitored. Um, I think that there's an opportunity to address deviations. Um, but also improve upon things because there could be reasons why things are deviated from. So I didn't know if, if there's already a process in place where things are being monitored and evaluated. But I wanted to bring that to PCAC because I, you know, again, I think it's something, transportation is a major concern. And there's a lot of burden on the parents. I mean, we, we're talking about efficiencies. So along with efficiencies, there may be an opportunity here to look at how we are, um, addressing deviations from procedures. And there, oh yes, go ahead.
I'm just, and what I wanted to say is that, and if you're, if you're actually referring to a, a specific administrative procedure, there, in the last page of every administrative procedure, it does tell you who, um, it does lay out, or I shouldn't say the very last page, but the very end, there's a whole compliance and monitoring section. And it should lay out the AP if it's been updated. Not all, all APs have been updated because divisions are responsible for updating their APs. And then we do review them when they've been updated. But there should be a section in it that says compliance, monitoring compliance of which then it should lay out specifically who's responsible for monitoring different aspects of the requirements of the AP.
Okay. Fabulous. So Dr. Jackson, one of your staff members I have followed up with last night, um, because I had asked, uh, a specific question in the session dealing with, um, operating procedures. And she got back in contact with me today. I just wanted to bring to your attention that I will follow what, um, was just mentioned here and take a look to see if there's a specific procedure in place and reach out to that contact.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thanks for letting me know. And I'm glad that, uh, you're finding us responsive. Thank you.
Yes, yes, yes. All right. So the next item. Um, I attended the last Board of Education meeting and I provided testimony regarding our special education program, behavior management process and our specialty programs. This testimony was supported with a list of recommendations for our administration as well as one for our Board of Education. But I want to publicly extend many thanks to PCAC. A number of you all supported the recommendations. Um, Ms. Lundey, she, I, I know she has some personal things that she's dealing with, but she took the time to, um, guide me through how to structure my testimony. Um, I even sat with Chair Millhouse and she gave me recommendations as well. So again, So again, the work that P CAC did for me, just as a parent, cause this, you, this didn't have anything to do with P CAC. But the, the individuals that are a part of P CAC work with me as a parent and I am just very grateful. And I want you all to know that it didn't only impact me. I have parents who are now coming up to me saying that they are now encouraged to advocate on the behalf of their children, as well as children of the school system in general. So I wanted to just extend the thanks. Um, let me just make sure I caught everything. Yes, I think I did. So, Ms. Lundey, I believe you were next. I don't think I could see the hands, but, um, you, you may, you may go ahead and speak.
Thank you so much and so proud of you, Ms. Smith. So proud of you. And what you did, it did involve P CAC, so we are just so proud of you. I mean, I'm speaking for myself, but I hope I can share the sentiments of other P CAC members. And again, welcome to our new members and thank you, uh, Millhouse and the Vice Chair for this opportunity to speak. Um, definitely want to reiterate what Ms. Walker, um, our colleague talked about with voting. In my role as the, um, as one of the board members for the Board of Elections for Prince George's County, I just wanted to admonish you that the community, speaking directly from the community accident, because I know this is going to be what later on, please get out and vote for this primary. Early voting is May the second through May ninth, from seven A M. to eight P M. You can visit the Prince George's County Board of Elections webpage. Just Google, type that in your Google chat, Google, uh, search engine, Prince George's County Board of Elections. And you will find information there about your polling places, the early polling sighting, sites, the ballot drop box locations. Because it's very important as parents, um, advocates, uh, stakeholders, what have you, that we elect the people to the board who we want to be representing our students, okay? Because you do have voices as parents, our students as boys have their voice through you and also independently. So get out and vote, May the second through May the ninth is our early voting. And you can learn more about that at the Prince George's County Board of Elections website. And so again, thank you so much for this opportunity to share. And again, Ms. Smith, congratulations to you. Bravo to you. And thank you, Ms. Walker, for bringing that to our attention with the voting. And I just wanted to, uh, elaborate more on that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Awesome. I'll get back. Thank you.
I'm back. Um, thank you all. Um, uh, do we have any other community updates? No, I, I appreciate you all. Um, and, and I can say this has been an exciting two years. It, it has been. And like Ms. Walker mentioned, um, this, this year, I feel like we have really been out here. As I should say so eloquently, in these streets. We have been in these P G C P S streets. And, um, you know, it's just been good to be able to kind of engage with the community to work, um, alongside the superintendent and our board members and just really, um, showing, right, that solidarity. Like we, we are here as a collective, the community is together. And we are really working to just, um, rebrand how people see P G C P S. How do we work to better, um, engage with one another as partners? Um, but really just hone in into, uh, just being good listeners, right? Being really good listeners, um, and just being honest, good people, right? And so we're modeling these behaviors because this is what we want our children to also, um, do when they move from childhood to adulthood, right? And so, um, despite the trials and tribulations that we all experience in day to day life, we all have a lot of knowledge, um, skill sets and abilities that we can bring to the table to help fill in the gaps and work together as a collective. And so I appreciate the work that you all do, um, you know? And despite everything that's happening in our own personal lives, we continue to show up. Um, and so, you know, from surgeries to hospitalization to, you know, just, we, we can, we can write our whole own book right here, right? What, the last two years and what the last two years had looked like, you know, collectively. So I appreciate, uh, what we're doing and what we will continue to do. Um, and so if there is nothing else, um, we are going to move in Items Three, follow up and next steps. And I feel like I have a broken record. I keep mentioning the bylaw committee. And, you know, write me up, sue me, kick me off the P CAC, you know? I'm gonna get with the bylaw committee, but I do believe that it's been delayed for a reason. Cause we help me have new members. And so as the new members are here, uh, would you all enter, be interested, um, in participating? And, and let's just talk as a committee real quick. Is, is it something we want to do right now? Because right now we have about five or six of us who out terms in June thirtieth. And so, you know, um, we, we can make some suggestions and we, we may be the same individuals in another term and we may not be. Um, so how do we really think to move forward with? Keep moving forward with the updates and present them to you all next month? Or hold off and let the new group, what do we do? What do you want to do? Any suggestions?
Um, yes, I have a suggestion, Chair Millhouse. I couldn't find my raised hand. I'm sorry. Um, so I like the idea of making the suggestions. Also, I don't know if we could call just a, a special meeting to talk about that? Or if we could put out some kind of, did you put out a document or something?
Oh, the, the bylaws are in our shared drive. Um, the only people that don't have access to them are Ms. Davis and Ms., um, Ms. Durden. And so, um, they're in our shared drive. I, I am, so on my to do list, to have, um, some of my suggestions as I'm then looking at the P CAC from some of our neighboring, um, school districts.
Right.
Um, to kind of share and, um, some suggestions and just to kickoff, right? And then allow everyone to chime in because it's on the Google Doc Drive, right? And so we do have it accessible to all of us to provide comment on that document. Um, and what I'll do is I'll put it in a folder, another folder.
Okay, all right.
I'll put it in a folder for May.
Okay. So we wouldn't need to have a special meeting. You just want us just to put suggestions in there? And then you give us a deadline date of when you would like to have everything wrapped up or something? Just a suggest? Okay, cool.
Yep, yep.
All right.
Any other comments? I mean, I would still like to get with, um, the, the bylaws committee. But are there any other comments about the process and how we should, how do you think we all should move forward? Um, because the, the application period has opened up. Um, so if you all are interested in moving forward and putting your name up there for another term, um, based on the current bylaws, you all can do that. And, um, the bylaws also, I mean, the, uh, procedure, policy fifteen hundred, not procedures, but the policy fifteen hundred, um, outlines that. And it also states that the community members, um, have, are required a full vote by the board. Um, but the district members are, um, selected by the representative from that district. So, um, it is open until May thirtieth. I'm not sure if that date is going to change because if it's open until May thirtieth and the board, by the time the information gets to the board, yeah, we'll, we'll be gone.
So did they put their application out already, Chair Millhouse?
Yeah, it's on P CAC's, uh, I mean, it's on the boards, uh, it's on the boards page.
Okay, I have to look it up. Do you know what is, what is it under?
It just says P CAC application.
Okay, I'll look it up. And definitely we can share it. We can share it also. Thank you.
But my recommendation is they, um, modify the, the end date because May thirtieth is absolutely too late, um, to move forward and get, um, the next group of individuals to come in by June thirtieth. Ms. Smith, Vice Chair Smith?
Thanks, Chair Millhouse. Um, as it relates to the bylaws, um, I really like the idea of as much input that we can obtain right now, we should do so. I understand that there has been a lot of work done, you know, at the ground level to get P CAC in place. And with a lot of you guys leaving, we will be losing some institutional knowledge. So if we need to hold a special meeting, I would, I would be a fan of that too. But again, at a minimum, if we can get as much feedback as we can right now, I think that that will help sustain, you know, the work that you guys have done.
Yes. Okay, so I, I think that we are all in agreement and, um, I will make sure, Ms. Davis and Ms. Durden, I, um, will make sure that you all have access to the, the drive, um, which we also need to get transitioned over, right? And, um, so we'll talk to Chief Boyd about making sure that our P CAC, um, account will allow me to shift everything over to that drive. Cause right now, um, it's on my personal drive because we didn't have resources when we first started. We still have limited resources, but still. Um, but we will do that. And that's also with the end of the year report, um, and Carter, help me out on this. Ms. Vice Chair Smith, help me out on this. Based on the meeting that the officers had, um, the suggestion that we had come up with to keep it very simple, um, was based on the initial recommendation report that we sent in, um, identify any updates that have happened based on those recommendations, right? And, um, talk about the activities that we have been a part of, um, over this period, um, to kind of highlight what we've done as an entity. Did I get that right?
Correct. And to, uh, to, to, uh, provide, um, to, to point, to point to how the, uh, the implementation of, uh, Board Policy fifteen hundred was, uh, was going forward. So that, that's, I guess, building off of the recommendations that we made previously. Yeah.
Yes. Yes. And so, of course, we will, once we get the draft, we will send that as to you all as well for feedback, input. Um, and then we will have to vote as a committee to move forward as our final report. So we will just start the draft and then, um, you know, put that in the folder as well for comments, feedback. And start thinking about what you've done since you've been here, the impact that you've had, um, you know? And I know that we've done a lot. So, um, but we do want to just highlight, um, at a high level, what we've done and, um, what we want to continue to move forward as an advisory council in support of the work that the, um, administration and Board of Education are doing on behalf of the students in the community. Any questions? Okay. So hearing none, um, that really concludes Item Three for follow up. There really are no next steps, other than I will be creating the folder. And, um, at this point, we can move into Item Four, which are my closing remarks, which is a nice time being with you all, May first. Um, April showers bring May flowers, so let's go out there and bloom, right? Let's bloom. And so at this point, I would like to ask someone to provide a motion from the floor to adjourn the meeting.
That we adjourn the meeting for this.
Second.
Thank you. And at this time, all in favor, say aye.
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 I prayed that no one opposes, but if you do speak down. At this time, I hear none. And so it is, what time is it? It is eight twenty-eight P M. We have adjourned our meeting for May first, twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night. Have a good evening, everyone.
Aye.